Great to see everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01. And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So we don't think I see any members of the public, but we will now at 6:02 open the floor for public input per RSA 18974. We will allow 30 minutes of public comment. And if there's, is there anyone with us that would like to speak? No? Okay, great. So we'll move forward, and if anyone shows up, we can certainly take public comment later in the agenda. We will be discussing a new policy on the unauthorized personal communication devices, and per that policy, we will make space for dialogue. So if there's public comment around that later in the agenda, we can stop for that as well. So moving on to the PTO update.
Hello?
That's okay. I saw the light. I'm sorry. Hi. Welcome back. We're here again. PTO update. We've already been, this sounds really loud. I'm going to stand back a little bit. We've already kind of done a lot, even though it's the beginning of the school year. In the summertime, we did three successful kindergarten meetups. It was an opportunity for caregivers and parents to, who are having new students come in, come and meet at Main Street Playground and be able to meet other parents and caregivers and have their kids also get to know each other. And the people that put that on was one person from the board, an incoming kindergarten parent herself, and then another parent. They actually like were able to put lists together so parents could see what classes that their children were in. So it was a really great way for parents to make connections with each other. So we did three of those to start off over the summer. We also had a table at the meeting greet, so it was an opportunity for parents to come over and get to know the PTO and how they can get involved. And we sold some spiritware as well, which was really great. And then provided a welcome back breakfast for all teachers and staff at both Main Street and Lincoln Street. Ginger Fox was here with coffee. And it's just like a really great way to make sure that we let our teachers and staff know that they're really appreciated getting going at the start of the school year. We have a new form for teachers and staff to fill out if they have an idea or they're interested in an event. The idea is that they talk to Beth or Ryan first to kind of go over the idea, and if it's something that the PTO can fund, we want to make sure that things come out of the right bucket. So being able, if it's something that we can do, we want to make sure that we can make that come to fruition. So we have a new form for staff and teachers to fill out if they have ideas for different things that will benefit our children. And then lastly, our first meeting is on Thursday, and we're doing a pizza party again. And we already have, I checked this morning, I haven't checked since early this morning, but we have 31 kids coming. Yeah. So we have childcare. We have some volunteers over from Exeter High School that are helping us and going to provide childcare in the gym. So we're super excited to have lots of either returning or new, just activity with parents, caregivers coming in, just seeing how they can get involved with the PTO. So we're looking forward to a really great year. Any questions for me?
No, that's incredible. Thank you.
Cool.
Allison, over to you. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you, and thank you for having me here. Allison Bryant, I'm your new Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent Designee for Exeter, and can confirm that the breakfast that the PTO put on for the schools was amazing because I had a chance to sample that as well. So thank you for that and the work that you're doing to support our schools. It's been a great start, and I've felt incredibly welcomed by the staff and administration and students, and look forward to working more with you and hopefully offering support and guidance as needed. To start, I do want to turn it over to Principal McCloskey and Caderett to introduce new staff members, and then you can hand it back over to me when you're finished with that.
All right. So for Lincoln Street School, we have several new staff members that I just want to take a brief moment to welcome and introduce to the board. We have Brenda Conley, who is with us this evening, who is our new BCBA in our EBD program. She comes in a background, with a background in both clinical and public education, in both settings, and we're so excited to welcome her. We also have Alyssa Kabna, who is here with us as well, who is a case manager for our EBD program. Alyssa spent the last three years as an ABA Clinical Specialist in Madbury, and both Brenda and Alyssa were able to participate in our summer programming, so they were able to do some planning together, get to know the kids, the families, and really be able to hit the ground running this fall. So we are very lucky to have them and also feel very grateful that they were able to really spend some time getting to know our building and our community before we got going. We also have Kristen Hill, who is a case manager in Grade Four. She's coming to us with five years of case manager experience in a neighboring district. We have Megan Cludier, who is our new Student Support Center teacher. She's worked both as a paraprofessional and a case manager for students requiring emotional behavioral support, so we're excited to see Megan apply her skills to promote regulation, help students access learning, and really the overarching goal of our, what we call Room 202, is for those quick resets and to get kids back in the classrooms, they're not missing that time instruction with the teacher. And I think Megan's going to be very skilled at helping us reach that goal. And then lastly, we have Katie McKay, who is a case manager for our Global Skills Program, and we're very excited to welcome her. This is a position that we've had to contract for in the past, so to be able to hire Katie, who comes to us with several years' experience working with students with multiple disabilities, supporting academic emotional and behavioral needs. She has a really great skill set and experience that we're able to bring in and hopefully really build some continuity between those programs, between the two buildings. So we're excited to welcome all those individuals to Lincoln Street School for the new school year. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So we have a couple of new staff members at Main Street slash EDP this year. First, we have Kelly Brooks, who is here with us tonight, and Kelly is our Director of, Assistant Director of Special Education. Kelly comes to us with many years' experience as a director or Assistant Director of Special Education, as well as a school principal, and so we're glad to have Kelly join us this year. And then also, we have Kayla Dunn. She's not here right now, but she is a shared BCBA for our Global Skills Programs in both Main Street and Lincoln Street School. So she's a behavior specialist, supporting those programs in both of our schools. Thanks.
And Max. But you guys all get to meet Max.
Thank you. The only other thing that I wanted to highlight is you see a lot of policies on the agenda for tonight that will probably be a trend that will continue. We just have a lot of policy work to do this year. The majority of the policy this evening, and I know we'll discuss this later, but just to preview them, they really are for review only. We're required to review them periodically, some of them annually or on a regular basis, and so we bring those to you tonight. And then, of course, we have a couple of other ones that we'll talk about a little bit more in depth.
Great. Thank you. And we were just talking before the meeting, thought it might be nice to just say a personal hello from the board perspective, just to our new members of staff. So I'm Heather Eichmeyer, I'm the Board Chair. I'm also a parent, and I work in arts education.
Hi, welcome. I'm Beth York. I'm also a parent in the district, obviously. I have a third grader who just rose up here to Lincoln Street School, and I also have a seventh grader, two girls, in the school system.
Patrick O'Day, I'm a Scorpio. And I have a second grader and someone who's pre-K, a pre-K kid who's on the way to joining Main Street next year.
Tim Reed. I have a third grader and a fifth grader now here at Lincoln Street. I have, past 15 years, worked for a company called Teaching Strategies, which is an early childhood education company based in Washington DC, which is where I lived for eight years before moving here in 2016. So been fortunate to work for them since college, and unfortunate to serve on this board this time. Thank you.
Welcome. My name is Kate Pratt. I'm a physical therapist. I own a private practice in town. I'm a graduate of this school, as is, I had three children that went through the system as well. So, welcome. Thanks.
We look forward to getting to know all of you better.
Before we move on, can we just, can I ask us one small thing, which is just that if someone could just address, I know what it means, just, but for those listening at home, in case they missed it, what EDP stands for in particular? And even BCBA, just, I think Beth did a good job of sort of describing it as behavioral support. But anyhow, just with the alphabet soup, sometimes it can get lost on people watching.
So EDP stands for Exeter Developmental Preschool. So it's our preschool that we serve for students who have some special needs and/or we have community peers that also feed into that program. So we have three and four-year-olds over at our preschool, which is over on School Street, not too far away from here. And then we refer to BCBA's really as behavior specialists. They really work to support students who might have some behavioral needs and really do a lot of deeper dives and assistance in supporting kids who need some extra support in those areas.
Great. Thank you, and good reminder, Patrick. Thank you. Any other updates? That's it. All right. So I would like to now turn to the minutes from June 10th, 2025, and just give you all a chance to look over those. We had both a public session and a non-public session. So I would like to make a motion to approve both the minutes from June 10th, both the public and the non-public session. A little second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Principal updates. Do we have more to share? All right. Who wants to go first? It's always the big question.
I'll start with the littles. So we have had a great opening of school this year. First, starting off with some summer highlights that happened over the summer. We had a few opportunities offered by our school librarian, Maureen Kiesel, for families to come out and participate in Story Hour or Storytime that coincided with the farmer's market down on Swayze Parkway, which was excellent. She actually had a huge turnout, so we were really pleased with the number of faces, familiar faces, that we saw down at the parkway. And the, like Sarah mentioned earlier, we did have three opportunities where kindergarten families who were new to our school had some meetups on our playground, and it was great to see so many kids participating in that. There was a lot of early connections that were made, and just getting them onto our playground is really beneficial, so they can get used to our space. So thank you to Ms. Kiesel and the PTO for offering those opportunities over the summer. We, and just a highlight for, you know, and a big thank you goes out to our Facility Department because over the summer, they worked diligently to clean our schools. They did a fantastic job. There were a few facility highlights that I just wanted to bring up. Our new cafeteria mural that was supported by Wheelwright Funds went up over the summer, just in the nick of time for the school to start, but it's such a beautiful mural. It's bright, it's colorful, it follows sort of a Sesame Street color theme, and so it just really brightens up our space, and the kids and the staff are really enjoying it. So thank you for providing, you know, and allowing those funds to support that project. We did, Facilities did install a number of enhanced door locks in some of our doors across all three of our buildings. It's just an upgraded security feature to ensure that we can properly lock our doors in the event of some sort of emergency or anything where we would need to barricade inside a room or something like that. So that was really helpful at Main Street. Few of our bathrooms were upgraded, much-needed upgrades, and freshness brought into the space, and so that was really appreciated. And then the installation of our new digital marquees are coming soon. I was told actually just this morning that in the next couple of weeks, we should really see some progress with installing those. So maybe by the next board meeting, you will all have had a chance to see our new marquees. So fingers crossed. The first four days of school with staff was really successful. One of those days, staff spent inside their classrooms, getting things ready for the new school year. And then the other days, we provided a number of professional development opportunities for staff. And actually, when we listed out and we reflect back on, there was a lot of opportunities for learning for different adults in our building, which was exciting. Couple of other highlights that happened. We had the Meet the Teacher event on Friday, August 22nd, and that was to welcome all of our students back to school. It was a nice collaboration. We had, we partnered with Great Bay Kids, YMCA, Food Services, Nursing Services. Our preschool staff was there to greet preschool families, and we had the Kona Ice Truck there. I'd say overall, it was really successful. It was nice to see so many families and caregivers coming out to just say hi, meet the teacher, and connect with their old teachers too, which is always really sweet. Students right now, two weeks in, we're busy learning routines, learning about how to play on the playground, learning how to eat in the cafeteria. All those back-to-school routines are underway. And then just a couple of highlights on some of our goals for this year at Main Street School. Really looking to strengthen our multi-tiered system of support. So what that means is, some of the work we're doing is looking at some of our assessments to make sure that they're really, we're really finding out information that we need to know in order to provide really high-quality instruction. We are focusing in an area of writing instruction this year, which is really exciting for our early learners. And we are going to continue our work in establishing, we have an established mission for our schools, and we're going to continue with staff to really develop a high-quality vision statement, and then some goals and some priorities beyond that. So that's, those are some of our goals for this year. This week in particular, we started with our WIN time block. And what that means, we call it WIN. What it means is, what I need. And it's a short block of time where we can provide students what they need, whether that's remediation, whether it's extension, whether it's just, you know, reviewing some specific skills. We really work hard to look at our assessments and look what kids need and be able to provide those supports as needed. And it's sort of an all-hands-on-deck approach, meaning we have classroom teachers, we have support staff, we have our specialist teachers. They're all working to support students during those times, during those WIN times that are built into our master schedule. And, let's see, one last, let me say this, one, a couple more highlights. At Main Street, we are going to start back, offering our Community Story Hour on Tuesdays. We're going to start on September 23rd, and that is from 8:45 to 10 o'clock. We invite all of our early learners, children ages four and under that can come with their caregivers, and spend time in our library. And they get a story hour from Ms. Kiesel. They'll go to music class and get to play with some instruments, and then they'll go to a shortened art class or art space where they get to get messy and play around. So we encourage our young learners to come and join us during that time. And again, a big thank you to our PTO for the wonderful breakfast at the beginning of the school year, and we look forward to welcoming families and children and caregivers to our first PTO meeting this Thursday. Main Street School, 6:00 PM, pizza provided. Thank you.
All right. Lincoln Street School update. A lot of what Ms. Caderett said, I will be echoing, or I do echo, so I will not repeat it. We do have a couple of upcoming dates. We have open house scheduled for September 25th. The time for open house is going to be six to seven, however, in speaking with Main Street School and Ms. Caderett, we are going to make 5:30 to 6:00 o'clock available for invite-only, so perhaps for students or families that might do better in a less chaotic or a calmer setting, smaller setting, to provide those invitations so that they can have a positive experience at an open house versus when we have hundreds and hundreds of families and grandparents and students all running in different directions, which can be overwhelming. So we're going to provide that opportunity at both schools and are looking forward to that change. So for the majority of our students, it will be six to seven, but teachers will reach out to families that they feel like might benefit from a smaller setting as well. We also have Picture Day at the end of the month, on September 30th. I believe that's the same for both schools. So we're, get our haircuts done for that. For fall activities, we have quite a bit going on at Lincoln Street School. We have our cross-country program that, for each fall, it started on Monday and it goes for four weeks. Fall Drama Club, we have auditions being held this Thursday for the Kids Musical of Aladdin. We have, our student council has been elected. First meeting is this Friday. The first school store was this morning, and they did well. Beginning Band for Grade Four. We had a family information night last week, and our band programs are beginning in, I believe, next week for fourth and fifth grade. Fifth grade starts right off with rehearsals. Fourth grade is all about learning how to take the instrument out of the case, learn how to put it together, learn how to make those few squeaks here and there. So the sounds of the clarinet will be going through the McCloskey household, and I'm looking forward to it. We will also be having our second year offering a strings program at the elementary level. We started that last year. Ms. Levergood started that, so we are looking forward to that being in the second round. We have after-school enrichment, which will be in both buildings, starting up in October, so signups will be going out to families in the next week or two, so keep an eye out for that. Echoing what Ms. Caderett said, we had our Math WIN program begin this week. WIN, again, standing for what I need. Our first session is just three weeks, just so that we don't wait too long to get the program up and running. So we use our data from the spring, and we form some groups for a three-week kind of shortened cycle of it, while we finish up our fall testing. And then we are finishing up that fall testing this week, and we'll be able to use that data to then do our traditional six-week cycles. And then, of course, in October, we'll have our data report from both schools, so we'll be able to share certainly the highlights and where we ended up in the spring. And for the 24, 25 school year, we'll also be able to show you our starting point for this current school year. For professional development, just a couple of highlights that we're looking forward to. We're going to have some, I think, some in-depth conversation with staff across the SAU around the safe integration of AI into the classroom, and we do have a heavy focus on that for all SAU 16 schools for our October PD Day in AM. We have a speaker coming in, we have some other conversations that are going to just kind of help build that common foundation so that we have a good understanding of what it looks like for teachers, what's it look like for students and families, especially at the elementary level. We're going to do some continued work around executive functioning needs to help students stay organized and help them to be appropriately engaged in the classroom. This is something that we've worked on, I think it was last year, but our January PD Day will focus on some extensive PD around that. And then we're also in our second year of Benchmark Advanced, our literacy program, which we thought went really, really well in the first year, but we're going to really focus on scope and sequence, which is really the pacing. You know, the first year is always a little bit slower than what the program says that you should be going, and now that we kind of understand the program, the expectations, kind of the flow of it, we're going to really work on that scope and sequence and really also look at student writing output. We thought the program provided a lot more opportunities, but now to make sure that we're taking advantage of those as well. And then we discussed at the very end of last year, adopting Purposeful People, which would be an SEL program or Social Emotional Learning Program that would be common between Main Street and Lincoln Street. And so we're piloting that this year. So it's not across both buildings, but we have a small pilot group in both buildings that receives some PD during our August PD Days, and they'll be working on some slow implementation and getting some data for us on that. So that's our Lincoln Street School recap, and I know that we have a little bit of summer discussion coming up, so I'll turn that over to...
I have a question, Ryan.
Of course.
Is the Purposeful People something that like will have an, if you want to do it, will have an expense potentially down the line, or is it just a training?
The Purposeful People program does have an annual expense to it. It's minimal compared to a lot of our academic programs. It's not much, but it's not, the expense for it is expected and we can budget for it. It's not something that will be like, oh.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were planning.
Ryan, I just have another question for you.
Sure.
So I just continue to be impressed by how we integrate arts across both schools, so thank you for continuing to do that.
Sure.
And I just, I knew in early conversations, we were talking about the strings program. There was a lot of communication with the middle school too, around sort of building those pathways from, you know, early exposure here into hopefully continued engagement at the middle school level if folks are continuing on to CMS. And I just, I'm curious if we know, you know, if any of those fifth graders or, you know, last year went on to play strings at CMS, or if that's sort of a conversation loop that might be something that we could continue to understand if folks are, if students are participating in some of the music electives at Lincoln Street School, if they are indeed going on and playing, continuing an instrument.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have the specific numbers for you, but I think that would be certainly an appropriate question and easy enough to get that data for you. Certainly, the strings program would have just like a little window.
Sure.
But as far as the continuation of students participating, because we also have our fifth grade choral program as well.
Of course, as well, yeah.
So to just see what that continuation might look like at Lincoln Street, we could certainly figure that out, yeah.
Yeah. That would be great.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
All right. Last summer learning?
Sure.
Yeah, so just, we're all busy during the school year, but we're also really busy during the summer. So we put together a little video to just kind of show you what things look like here over the summer. We didn't show the classrooms being moved around, but lots of cute kids. We didn't show the classrooms being moved around, but lots of cute kids.
So we had about 70 students participate as part of special education programming. And Deanna has the numbers for her programming, but we're always really super busy and, you know, just love to kind of give you a little glimpse of what we do over the summer. Thanks.
Thank you.
So ESSO this year was really great. We had the Brown Center again. They do great things for the kids in social emotional, social emotional learning. They play games with structured play and how to maneuver conflict, how to talk about their feelings, how to think about how they could have approached something differently. It's really nice that we have them, that they come and hang out with our kids. They did have a group here and they had a group down in Main Street. So it's really nice, too, that they have a dedicated staff. So they get to know the students and the parents, because they also do pick up and drop off. And they do snack and they do all the things. And we had 97 slots, which means some children could go to the targeted reading program or targeted math program. So in the whole district, we have 97 slots that were taken by students and 69 students took those 97 slots. So it was well-attended. I do send out a feedback form for parents just to get, actually, the grant requires that. And we also want to get feedback from teachers and parents about how we could better improve the program. And the, not a lot of people always respond. We had a pretty good amount this time and it was overwhelmingly positive about all of the things. There's always things that we can fix that will work on next year. The teachers were really happy, too, with the way it was run. I took their feedback from last year. We tweaked some things and they really appreciated that, too. So it was a great year, so.
Can you just remind me how many, like, how many instructional hours? Or, you know, what's the duration and how many hours per week?
So it's, the students are dropped off at eight and they're picked up at noon. And within that time, they have a 45-minute targeted block in each content area. So they might be in two content areas. And in between that, they go to the Brown Center. And then the teachers go to the Brown Center, pick up their students, and then bring them back 45 minutes later. We are very flexible with like this vacations and there's camps. And so we try to be really flexible so that the students can get a little, like, a little bit of support, but still have their family time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Great, tremendous. I love, the video is great. It's great to see, you know, all the things that are going on here during the summer. Thank you for that. So we have our committee updates. We got new committee assignments, I think, at our last board meeting in the spring. And so I suspect some of these have met and some of them haven't, but let's just go through them. And the first one is our newly named Equity Committee, and that's Tim and Kate.
There hasn't been a meeting at this point.
Okay. I think, let's come back to policies, although I don't think it'll take too much time, but we'll circle back at that at the end. The next one was the Safety and Security Committee, and we have not met.
No, I think at the end of last year, I think the next meeting's October.
Okay, okay, great. And then Beth, you're back up for strategic planning.
We have met. We're a very ambitious committee. We met on August 27th, so we're still working on, we were working on KPIs, so key performance indicators, at the end of the school year last year. And we have picked up. So really, we're digging in during this meeting into what the actual data is and how we were going to have, which data made sense for the KPIs that we wanted to measure to meet for the strategic plan. So a lot of work has already gone into it. I think we, do we have another meeting scheduled? I don't think we have one on the calendar yet. And I do believe we'll hear about it at the joint board meeting next week, an update from Chris.
And if you're not ready to share this, that's fine. But can you remind us of sort of what areas you're, have you guys settled on what areas?
Yeah. Should I share? Am I allowed to share it on?
Are you allowed to, okay.
Maybe we need to wait till the joint school board? Even if it's not.
Yeah, it's going to come up at the board meeting on Monday.
Great, we'll wait for.
And really, we got a, you know, a visual of what, you know, the public-facing scorecard is going to look like and how we, as a school, not school board, as a school district, will measure progress and what that means, so.
Great. Wonderful. So next up is facilities, and that's Beth again and Patrick.
We have not met for facilities, so. I don't think, typically, we don't have a standing meeting set up for that. It's really on an as-needed basis. And I don't think we have anything, I haven't heard of any needs at the moment, so.
So we'll write trust, that's Tim and Kate.
We haven't received any new submissions. We believe we're on pause because we're assuming that the allocated funds will be gone after these few submissions at the end of the year, including the field trips that we're covering for this school year, the marquees, the stencils, and the mural. So the mural's done. We got the update on the marquees, the stencils, I'm not sure.
They're bought.
Yes, the stencils have been purchased, the painting should occur next week.
Great. And then field trips would be throughout this year, so by then, we'd probably.
Yeah, we just got to figure out what's left and then what the board wants to do with whatever's left.
Great.
So we didn't send anything.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I've really appreciated the updates on the projects and when possible, seeing the pictures and hearing that they're progressing and, you know, being enjoyed. So thank you for including those in your reports. Sabbatical, we have not had any meetings around sabbatical yet or requests that I'm aware of. And negotiations, that's Kate and Patrick.
Our first meeting is the 17th of September.
Great.
And also, just to add on to that, so this year, the negotiation is with the teachers group. And so I think we have, what, six times set up, something like that, sort of set aside.
Through November.
Yeah, sort of once a week or once every other week. And I think the hope is that, you know, over the next month or month and a half or whatever, we can kind of figure out what all the needs are and come to a consensus on what makes sense for a new contract.
Great, thank you, guys. Great.
Does the superintendent evaluation go here, too?
That's the joint school board.
Reported out there?
Yeah, that's.
It should be on here.
It should be on here.
We have met.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's add that to the charts in the minutes.
We have met, and those will also be presented at the joint board meeting on Monday.
Great.
Chris will present those. Dr. Andruski will present those.
I don't think, we're not, I think those are all the committees, correct?
Yeah. Okay, so let's circle back to policy. First, I just want to note that in your packets, there were quite a few policies that were up for review only. So I'm not going to name them all, but they are that list from investment and petty cash accounts, cash in school buildings. So we don't need to necessarily take an official vote, but it's recommended that we, that I move to approve the policies on a review-only basis. So I'm going to go ahead and make that motion for policies DFA, DFD, DFF, DG, DJC, DKA, DM, EH, EI, IHAMA, JLCD, and JLCH. And I'm sorry, and one more, and JLCJ. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, I guess I would just say in terms of discussion, since we're not really diving into each of those, that if there were something that came up during the year, it doesn't mean that we couldn't revisit one of these policies and decide to amend it if need be. So just because we're doing this now, you know, if something were to come up, we still have that opportunity.
Yep, great point. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So the next policy I'll draw our attention to is AB Parental Bill of Rights. So we did have a meeting to discuss this, actually amongst all of the board chairs of the different districts. But this is the first time kind of bringing it to the board's attention. These, for the most part, and please correct me if I'm wrong, have existed in other places and you can see the legal references there. But this policy sort of consolidates them under policy AB. I know this is your first time sort of reviewing this, so I just wanted to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve so we can discuss, but make a motion to approve New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights AB.
Well, I guess I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Why do you think we need to make a motion to discuss it? I think we can discuss it.
Okay, so go ahead.
And then a motion to decide whether or not to approve it.
We can discuss it.
Because we may want to amend it, for example, or something else. So why don't we, maybe it makes sense to start with just a discussion.
Do you have something you'd like to share?
I don't. But I just, just in terms of a process, I mean, it's not a super-long policy in the scheme of things, but there's a lot that's sort of referenced in here, a lot of legal references in particular. Just to give folks a chance to make sure they understood what's in it.
Want to clarify, this is a brand-new bill?
The sort of compilation of these, these sort of, these Bill of Rights in one policy, isn't it?
I see.
Yeah.
Can I add something?
You may.
There's an additional requirement by law that we publish these on the website and in student and staff handbooks, which was part of the change this summer.
So, I mean, if you think about these, I mean, the way I understand this is kind of what you said, that, you know, things like for seclusion and restraint, for example, there's already a law about that. We already have a policy about that. People are already trained on how that works, but it just has one place. It's almost like an index of a variety of policies. It's not all the policies we have, but a variety of policies that, you know, particularly legislators, but other folks thought were important to highlight.
That's right.
So... I mean, if you really wanted to know what's behind these, you'd have to look up each policy or each law to really fully understand it. But it's referencing a lot of different policies and laws. Well, laws in here, but we also have corresponding policies.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, now I will move to approve Policy New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights AB.
Second.
Second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, so the second policy that I, we will now discuss is Policy JICJ. And this is the policy around unauthorized communication devices. So this is actually a new bill that was signed into HB, part of HB2, which was signed into law this summer in June. And I will just read it. "The school boards and the Board of Trustees have chartered public schools shall develop and adopt a policy governing the use of student cellphones and other personal electronic communication devices." So this policy is already effect in our schools. Some of the elements of it are that this is a bell-to-bell policy. So the prohibition of all personal communication devices used by students starts at the first bell in the day and goes all the way through to the end of the school day. There are some exceptions. I'm determined by the superintendent to respect student medical disability or language proficiency needs. And my understanding is, we have gotten some of those requests and they have been met. And so that's another element of this policy. For today, this, the bill also states that this policy should be developed and the languages in collaboration with school parents and teachers and shall be reviewed annually. And so the law itself sets really clear parameters, as I've just discussed. But, you know, should the public want to discuss things further? There's, you know, conversation, you know, around sort of how devices are being stored or secured during the day. I understand right now that really mostly it's in backpacks and just how exceptions might be communicated and documented. And also, just discussed, we discussed at the meeting of the board chairs of just how do we continue to hear from students about any, you know, both things that they're experiencing that are really positive about this change and any considerations that they might want to express. So I'll open it up to comment for the board and just to note that we are also expected to kind of open the floor to the public to have this conversation as well. We are going to discuss the policy today and then we will, we will adopt it at our next board meeting. So we won't take a vote today. But I just wanted to open up for comment. Something to share?
How will, how will we invite the public to comment?
This was posted as part of the agenda and so they were invited to come today and to the other board meetings for public comment. And I suspect also in October. So if someone was unable to make it today, they are definitely invited to come and speak during our October meeting prior to voting on the policy. Again, I think there's parts of this policy that are, you know, pretty well established in terms of its parameters. And I think questions of sort of protocol are sort of the types of questions, I think, that we're inviting input on. Does that answer your question, Beth?
Yeah, I just don't know how many people look at the agenda for our meetings. Like, is it something that we should maybe put out in like an update to the, like, the weekly updates to parents?
Do you have any thoughts from other, you know, what the other boards have been thinking about?
I think consistently, it has been an opportunity at board meetings for public input there. We can certainly have more conversation about, you know, what else we might be able to open up between now and then.
I just mean like come to the board if you have comment. Because I don't know if they would know to come to the next board meeting if they have a comment. Not to provide comment in another sphere, just to say, if you have a comment, come. Because I don't know that they would look at our agenda, but they might read your updates they send every week.
I can work with administration and see what we can.
Which might be another venue.
That's right. I mean, we've had, we've had times when we've had, I mean, when we were looking at having a school security officer, we even took out an ad in the local paper for them, even to invite people to come to sort of a public forum about that possibility. So, I mean, I think you're right. There's probably, we probably need more than one way. It's not that, it's not that it doesn't meet the legal requirement to just post it as. It's not that, it's not that it doesn't meet the legal requirement to just post it as part of the agenda, but just to get people's attention in different ways so they're aware. I mean, have you, have the, have folks started to hear any reaction from families? I mean, at the elementary level, probably has a different impact than it's gonna have at the.
Watches, yeah.
At the older kids. Yeah, the watch part, okay.
The new law, I can speak up if I need to, but, I mean, the new laws are already pretty consistent with what we had for expectations on cellphones. And again, we do have families that do like to communicate with their child through the school day on, on smart devices that can, you know, we try to have those conversations one-on-one when they happen.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not a huge concern.
What happens to access to their, like, if they have a smartwatch? Are they not allowed to bring it into school? Do they have to put it in their backpack? Do they, how, how does that work?
Can I just start this and then just jump in? So we actually have a line in the policy specific to smartwatches. And we felt like it would be important to include that for, exactly, for students have the opportunity to learn to tell time. However, knowing that that can be, you know, we, we have to keep an eye, we're still expected to follow the law. And so if there was a violation on a smartwatch, this is where I turn it over to the principals to talk about how you would handle that.
It's just, you know, progressive discipline model like you would for, for any other similar type of infraction, which is, you know, the first time might be a conversation with the classroom teacher or just kind of based on the new language, it might be a conversation with me. And then either the teacher or myself would follow up with the parent and just say, hey, you know, this is what happened, this is kind of the why. And then if there's a second infraction, you know, that we might say, you know what? Let's have you pick this up at the end of the day if situation with another parent contact. But, you know, we'll, we'll be in contact with families along the way. So there, there won't be any gotchas of like, oh, you can't have this device anymore. So we'll be in contact with families. And if it does become a repetitive issue, we may get to a point, you know, that ultimate piece might be, you know what, this seems like it's a distraction to the learning environment. So it might not be something that we can have in school.
Just, can I, I'm sorry, just, so I understand, I was, I was asking about, or what you said is helpful, but just sort of the logistics of what happens. You know, I know some schools will say, you have to turn in your phone and put it in a locker, you know, and they lock it up and that sort of thing. I don't think we have that system here. But are there, if someone has a phone, are they allowed to bring it into the school, but it needs to stay in their backpack and doesn't come out? It needs to have the ringer turned off? Is that essentially how it would work? Okay.
The way our building is, is that if it searches all day, the battery dies.
Yeah.
So they didn't turn it off.
Right.
During the day. We are a neighborhood school, so I do understand that, that some parents wanted to make sure that their kids got here.
Right, so they can track their phone.
When they walk.
Yeah.
But they do have to turn it off when they get here. And I've had students in my office crying because they forgot and the battery died all day because it was just searching. They don't do it anymore.
Well, and the policy does state consequences for violations will be outlined in the student handbook. So I think, you know, if that, it's helpful to know sort of what you're thinking. And, you know, I think we can't change the law, but I think, you know, I think that kind of feedback is helpful to share with the principals as that handbook is updated with the information from the law.
I think one, one of the concerns that I heard before, you know, obviously, it wasn't in response to something happening over the summer, but was sort of access, parents being concerned about their kids having access to a communication device in case there's an emergency. Check if there's a fire drill, God forbid, you know, a shooter or something. Just the, just sort of having that quick access for that. And I don't know how that would impact this. I mean, if we had something, if there was a shooter drill, you wouldn't have all the kids go to your backpack and grab your phone necessarily. You'd be like, let's go outside. You'd just, you would just have them go immediately, right? Or a fire drill or whatever. So I think that's, that's just, I mean, I haven't heard that directly in response to, you know, the agenda today, but I know that's something that came up as a topic of conversation previously, that'd be worth, I don't know, just anticipating that concern and thinking through, you know, how to address it in the best way we can within the parameters of the law.
Can I ask a simple question? It may be too simple. But how do you make your smartwatch not be used for communication? I mean, even if you have it in do not disturb, I guess if their phone's off, but if they...
Parents can set it on, it's called school time.
Okay.
My parents, but I, we have some children that know how to change that.
That's what I was wondering.
I've had students come to me and show me it's on school time, and then I let them go, and then I find out from the teacher it was off school. So then we have to move forward with like, my, your mom, you know, like, we trusted you to have it, because they do use it for time and weather and whatever.
I think what some of these questions are also raising, just from a protocol perspective, you know, and what might go in the handbook is, I think you will learn over the year, even after, you know, what kinds of questions and things we need to anticipate. And the policy does have to be reviewed annually and, you know, space for public input. So I think, too, there might be opportunities for us to learn around sort of what might we want to, like, I, that, I think that's a simple question, but it's actually very, very useful if you have a student with a smartwatch who you're sending to Lincoln Street School. It's just how do you, how do you support them in complying with the new rule, right? I think some of those sort of small nuggets of both information and education and support would just help the students also, and you'd be successful in complying with the new policy. So we might not, we might be able to anticipate some of those now, and some of those, I think, as we get into the year, I'm sure you'll, you'll get additional feedback. I will say, too, I mean, not from our, our age students in these two schools, but I think with having students in the middle of school and high school, I did do a small focus group, and there, this, many of the students are really receiving it very well. They're talking during lunch, they feel like they're more present. So I think there's, there's really important considerations, and I think there's probably a lot of benefits, too, that we're seeing.
Typically, at our level, it's really the smartwatch.
Yeah.
And, and it's only half a dozen in a school year.
Yeah.
It's not a lot. And it's more of a conversation about, you know, we're gonna have you put it in your backpack, explain why, explanation, reach home, have a conversation with the caregivers, explain why, and, and that usually works.
One, one small thing about just how this is written.
Sure.
On the, in here, I don't, this is just a personal thing, but on the first page, under the third paragraph in restrictions, I don't, I don't know why we have only in all caps twice. You know, I, I just don't think we need that. And I understand, I know what the word only means.
I'm sorry, where are you?
The third paragraph under restriction.
Oh, yeah.
I just think you can write the, you can write the word only. You don't need it all caps.
It doesn't need to be in policy, maybe in some sort of external comms, but not in the actual policy.
Right, in the policy itself, exactly. That, that seems like something more if you're, exactly, communicating internally. But the policy, we don't usually do that.
That's easy. Any other comments on the policy itself?
Just a note for your information, we are expecting to review this in, at the April Policy Committee meeting, so it won't even be all the way at the end of the year, so.
Great. So we'll, we'll have a chance to revisit this in October. Great. Moving right along, new business? I did have one item. We, if you've noticed on our agenda, we still have our 2024, 2025 Board Goals. I think we touched on these really briefly at a prior meeting. And we can, you know, finalize this at our October meeting, but typically like to give a moment for us to kind of just review our five goals and see if there's any changes that we want to make for the new year. And then change this to the 25, 26 goals. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read them, and I'll open it up for any discussion. If we feel in agreement, we can go ahead and decide to move forward with these goals. If, if not, we can certainly revisit in our next meeting. So these are the, these were the, the goals that we identified for the last academic year as a board. And the first goal is to establish and maintain partnerships and effective communication lines with our families, caregivers, and community. The second was to ensure that our schools are fully welcoming and creating a deep sense of belonging for all students and families by considering diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice as a core value. The third was to support efforts to promote educational equity and close student, and close student achievement gaps while working to improve academic performance for all students. The fourth is to actively support the ongoing development and review of safety and security initiatives at our schools. And the fifth is to support social, emotional wellness of our students, staff, and school community in meeting the holistic needs of our population. I just wanted to see how those are landing with you all, and if any of you have any thoughts about changes or additions for the current academic year. Any thoughts? Do these feel like goals that you would like to continue with? Or would you like to wait until October to determine that?
I wonder if we should hear, like, the strategic plan on Monday for the district to, or what we have so far from a presentation, to see if maybe some of those through lines can, you know, bleed through in our goals, to see if that makes sense.
I like the idea of them rolling up to the.
I think that's a great idea. Okay. Any other thoughts? I think that's wise.
I mean, I guess it's, it's always hard with goals because it's, all these things are important.
Sure.
And there's also a lot of other things that aren't in here that are important. And it's just, you know, at some point, you just have to, you're choosing a few things to focus on and emphasize. It doesn't mean that the other things that aren't on here aren't things that the, are important for the district to pursue and that we don't support those efforts as well. So I, you know, I think, I think depending on what comes out of the strategic planning discussion, we, we may replace a goal with another one. I, I personally don't think it's as helpful to have, you know, eight, 10 goals or just to keep adding on, because you'd, you'd lose focus. So whether it's four, or six, or five, or whatever, is, is fine, but I think we should, we should think about that when we have the discussion next month. Oh, you know, I'd also say, I know this is under the goals, but it's right underneath it. This is, this piece on here about Guidelines for Effective Cross-Cultural Dialogue, that really comes from a training that we did. I mean, at this point, TOEY moved like four or five years ago. It's, it goes back, I think, before the pandemic. So it's, it's from a training from about five years ago when most of us weren't on the board. And so, you know, for those, this, these short words to have any meaning, I think we either need to think about having some sort of updated training or reconsider whether or not this is the best language to have on here. I mean, I, I think these are, these are great, but they have to be meaningful for us.
Yeah. I think that's great, thing for us to think about. All right, great. I really like the suggestion of hearing more on the strategic goals for SAU 16 and thinking about how these align and, and with those. So we'll, we'll circle back to these in October. Great, any other new business? All right.
Could I just, I'd just say again, the meeting, the joint board meeting is Monday.
Yes.
It's at the clock. Just that everyone's, you know, has that on, in case you don't have it on your calendar.
Yep.
Hopefully, we can get a good turnout for the first meeting in particular. There aren't that many times the joint board meets, so be good to have everyone there.
Yeah, and it sounds like we'll have a lot of really important things to discuss, so looking forward to that. Any old business? I don't think there's any old business. And I don't think we have to go into non-public. So I am pleased to adjourn the meeting at 7:05.